You are up, Commissioner.
Okay, the Board of Bannock County Commissioners are in session, and our first item is to go into the Board of Ambulance.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into the Board of Ambulance.
We have motion, all in favor, say aye. And there's invoices here.
You've got no questions, I suppose?
No.
All right, is that it, just invoices?
Yeah, it's our thing at Pocatello.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the invoices as presented.
Have motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, and I move that we enter back into the Board of Commissioners and exit the Board of Ambulance.
We have motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Next, we have invoices, Commissioners' reports. So, we have a couple of jury, and I'm sure that that's gonna be bigger.
Yes.
A little bit.
And would you make a note on the one jury batch? It shouldn't show names? Because it's...
It doesn't... Oh, that's, that's a...
Yep, that's for the Comfort trial. That's not public information.
That was the other trial, right? That was a grand jury?
Well, no.
Oh, okay.
That's the Comfort trial.
Okay.
That information isn't public, but then there's, um, there were two jurys going on. So, one you have names, one you don't. That's why you don't run the one.
Okay, nah, okay. Yeah, I was told that that was a grand jury originally, so...
You used the words wrong.
Anyway, thank you. And then, I don't have any questions on the other one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
We have a couple more here.
Oh, sorry, I thought you had done...
And this one, 10x software, says that you'll code it.
That's for ARPA. It is coded at the 250-502 is where you guys will sign.
Okay.
Um, that's just the remainder of those EPO books that we used ARPA funds for.
Okay.
And those actually came in under what we anticipated streaming following ARPA.
Just so we don't hurt your feelings.
Look at that, that's really something.
Nice factor, look.
Good, real good.
Good.
Aren't we supposed to sign this one too? Are we all signing this?
No, that's what I'm doing now. Sorry, I just started signing them fast. Do you want to talk about this one at all?
Yep. Um, we finally got the final bill for the jail group. That, however, did go over the approved ARPA dollars by $6,750, but that was because the architect fee came in after FY '23 started, which required us to use, or after, yeah, after, sorry, after '24 started. So, we had to use all ARPA funds for it as opposed to the money that had been budgeted in the general fund. So, there's a little bit more there, but overall, there's things.
We'd have a final product, huh? On a warranty? That's what we want. Thank you. Okay, motion now.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the invoices as presented.
We have motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have salary rate approval forms.
Ready?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the salary rate approval forms as presented.
We have motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And then, we have a memorandum, and this is to give the two new members of the Fair Board the authority to sign invoices, not write for payment.
You're good with this?
Yeah, yeah. These are the two new members.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this memorandum as presented.
We have motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Looks like Emma, you're up first.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here, Emma Iannicon, Public Information Officer. I'm here today to talk about my proposed plan for Bannock County to participate in the Child Abuse Prevention Month campaign. This is a community, like a regional campaign, that's typically been led by Bannock Youth Foundation. This past...
Led by who?
Bannock Youth Foundation.
I'm sorry?
Bannock Youth Foundation.
Okay.
So, they're a local organization that works with youth in the community. I'm not 100% positive what their mission is, but they're, they're a big leader in the community in that. This past year, typically what we've done is those blue pinwheels that you see around the community during the month of April, that's been led by Bannock Youth Foundation, and they had a position specifically for that person to facilitate that, install those, come back and clean them up. But that position has been reworked or dissolved, so that responsibility has kind of spread to both the Bannock Youth Foundation and to Southeast Idaho Public Health. But this year, they're asking, since it's such a, a big project with so many businesses and facilities participating, they're asking that those businesses and facilities take on the responsibility of installing the pinwheels and cleaning them up and storing them. So, I just want to give that background before I get started. The first thing that I think that would be appropriate for us to participate in is a joint proclamation with the cities of Pocatello and Chubbuck. I've mentioned this to the Commissioners briefly in the past. I have a copy of the proposed proclamation. We are just waiting to get one line removed that would, and we've had legal take a look at this, and legal has asked that we remove this line that says, "We're setting our hands on this day of April," and that way you guys can sign it whenever it fall, like whenever it works out, and then Christie Davenport would be able to take the signed version to the other mayor's offices, like we have done in the past with joint proclamations. That proclamation would be read at the kickoff event at the beginning of April, and I'll, I'll talk more about that in a minute. The other idea is we would be sharing social media posts to our pages, you know, information about child abuse prevention and the resources in the community. So, that would be shared from our Bannock County pages as well as the other participating agencies. The blue pinwheels that I mentioned, I, I was thinking it would be appropriate to have those at the courthouse, at the village, the juvenile detention center, the sheriff's office, and the Port of Wellness Complex walking path. So, like I mentioned, we, we would be responsible for installing and cleaning those up and storing them. But one suggestion that was made was having the, the children with YDC or the village help with that as a community service project. And I spoke to Todd about that, Todd Maggar, about that the other day, and he said that that could potentially work. So, I wanted to bring that idea to you guys and see what you had, if you had any thoughts on that.
Well, I'm sure somebody in each department can put a few pinwheels in there.
Right, yeah. If that doesn't work out, I'm sure that it wouldn't be too big of a, a project to make that work.
Yeah.
And then, as far as storing them, you know, we have the Commissioners' closet, but I don't know if we have, I haven't identified a space in there, so I don't know if I, if you would suggest I work with those different departments to store their pinwheels. It's not gonna be a huge...
Well, I'm not okay in the Commissioners' closet without talking to Christie.
Right, yes. I have not gotten her permission first, so, but yes.
Who owns this stuff?
Um, so, the way that it'll work from here on out is that we would now own those pinwheels so that we can reuse them for the future years. But the Southeast Idaho Public Health and Bannock Youth Foundation have offered to purchase those pinwheels for us, so those would be free for us to use for the foreseeable future. And if they get damaged or broken, we would just communicate with them in the future years, that, hey, we need a few replacements, or something like that. And then, along those same lines, another couple of things that they're adding to the campaign this year is blue cups in the chain link fences, you know, when you drive by chain link fences, and sometimes they have the plastic cups that, like, say a message. I was thinking that might be kind of cool to put at the Port of Wellness Complex's soccer fields. However, that would be a charge of $125, and we would be responsible again for installing those and cleaning them up, and then we could store them and use them again for the next year. Can you think about that idea?
I'm not really interested in the cups, honestly.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Roser.
Okay. And the other idea that they're doing this year is stencil drawings of pinwheels on windows. So, you know, like that blue window paint, they would provide us stencil and the paint, and we would, you know, add it to the windows and then clean it off at the end of the month. That would be $5 a kit. I was thinking maybe at the village.
The village is the only place I'd, I'd do that. I wouldn't do it here at courthouse.
Okay.
I wouldn't do it anywhere.
Okay.
I, I like the pinwheel thing. I would prefer that the entity that is over this thing set up the pinwheels instead of our county employees doing it. Yet, I'm not for putting up stencil drawings and things like that because I think, what's the next organization? And the next organization that we're gonna be looking at this stuff, and I don't want to get into that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, it looks like pinwheels.
Okay, that's fine. The other idea is to have blue ribbons on the sheriff's office vehicles for the month of April. I spoke to Sheriff Manu, and he gave permission to, to do that. It would be 47 vehicles. We pay $57 for the ribbons and zip ties.
I'm sorry, read that by me again?
$57 for the ribbons and zip ties to tie the ribbons to the sheriff's vehicles.
Total or per vehicle?
No, total.
If Tony, okay, so, I mean, that's up to him, to me.
Yeah, I agree.
Blue t-shirts, uh, they, they are offering to, like, we could purchase blue t-shirts from them, or I'm pretty sure we could just wear whatever blue shirts that you have. But they're asking that people wear them. They haven't figured out if it's on Tuesdays or Wednesdays for the month of April, but one day a week we wear blue t-shirts to spread awareness of the campaign, take a picture of the department wearing the blue t-shirts and put it on social media.
John has a blue shirt. I have a blue shirt.
Right. Okay. I'll confirm that we can wear any blue shirt. I'm sure that that's fine. Okay, and then the kickoff event, it is tentatively scheduled for Saturday, April 6th, in the early afternoon at the Museum of Clean. They're working to nail that down with the Museum of Clean. That would be when the Commissioners and the mayors would read the proclamation to start the event, and then there would be booths for community resources from, like, you know, the different organizations that work with children. I'm working with a couple of offices in, at the county to have a booth there as well. And then...
Where's this kickoff going? Thank you.
At Museum of Clean. That's where they're trying to get that scheduled for. Last I heard on Monday is that they were, hadn't officially scheduled the time yet, so... And then, they're gonna have a coloring contest where area youth will participate and do a coloring contest, and they've asked if the kids from the village would be willing to judge that coloring contest and then present the winner at the kickoff event. So, and I'll be working with Todd on that, and Todd and Jessica from the village. Okay, so, I guess that concludes the plan that I wanted to propose. So, I just wanted to see if this is something that, you know, I want to get your feedback on what you wanted to do, and see if this is something we want to do every year, and just be able to streamline it for the next year.
Until we do it, I don't know. That's where I'm at. We'll see how the kickoff, and is something a little bit different?
Mm-hmm.
But the proclamation, I have no problem with that and the pinwheels.
Okay.
Yeah, and like I said, I would rather have, I don't want the county now employees to get into the business of storing stuff for outside organizations, for putting stuff up and things like this. I'd like you to go back and see if you can find somebody from these organizations to do that stuff.
I can ask them.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Shanda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer, and I have...
Buddy Romrell, Public Works Assistant Director.
With me today, I'm here to discuss a recommendation to award the invitation to bid for the county guardrails. So, we went out to bid for county guardrails on an on-call basis because we had some priority projects that we needed to get, be complete, and there's quite a list of items that need to be done. But not having a, a specific line item to take that from and know what our budget was, we wanted to be able to be flexible and be able to respond to the priorities that Road and Bridge set, and then be able to move as quickly as schedule and budget would allow. So, in doing that, we did get one response, but in only getting one response, we did want to double check, and we had reviewed that bid that we received against both of the previous project that we had and the state contract as well. And it is in line with the project that we had scheduled this year, and it is still below what the state contract would have been. So, we are confident in recommending that the board award that project. We would recommend then that the board award the county road guardrail ITB to Railco LLC.
Comment? Okay.
We do have a letter prepared, as the board would like.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendation as presented.
We have motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So, moving forward with this project, we do have a contract that's been approved through legal that will go to Railco later this afternoon for review, that'll come back before the board. And then, again, as Road and Bridge identifies priority projects, we'll be able to have a discussion with Railco and keep them on an on-call basis through this fiscal year into the next, but it is according to budget. They'll identify, when they identify the project, they'll ask for a quote for that project, identify the funds at that point, and then move forward or not according to what's available.
When I talk to Kyle, the monies for this is gonna come out of the road oil and the property acquisitions line. Because we didn't have it specifically budgeted for. Oh, wait, sorry.
Contract of labor.
Contract, yes. So, those two lines, so we'll just need to identify how much is gonna be used for this so that we can pull it out of those lines and know what we can spend on the other items.
Okay.
I've put together a packet too for you guys, so you kind of got an idea of what we're working on and where our plans are for the projects for this year. Just kind of a brief description of where it's at, pictures, and what our plans are.
So, you said this was a priority. Where's your, where is the most important priority coming?
Meat Creek has several sections that have been hit, so that's kind of where we're gonna start our focus, and then there's a big section in Aramo that was completely taken out, and so those are kind of the two priorities and...
And so, that, that brings up, my, my question is, I know the state charges people an insurance when their guardrails are damaged.
Yes.
Do we?
So, the section that was recently hit in Aramo, Ryan and I worked on that, trying to get that covered, and the person that hit it did not have insurance. So, when I went and got a bid forward, he had made the decision that we weren't gonna go after him as far as financially, and I don't know exactly how he determined that or...
I, I should say that there is a criminal case associated with that particular accident, and so the prosecutor's office is gonna be seeking restitution. Whether we see that or not is a different question, but there, I would anticipate a court order requiring him to pay that restitution.
Will those funds be allocated to Road and Bridge through that restitution? Or just general county?
Good question. I don't know.
If we can earmark those, if it gets ordered, that those funds need to go to Road and Bridge.
Okay.
Because we can differ. We've seen restitution go to different departments.
Okay, yeah. I will reach out to the prosecutor that's handling that case and ask for that.
Thank you.
That just, like I say, when we're talking about finances and monies and stuff like that, other, other state agencies charge. I think that we ought to follow that same suit. Okay? Cool.
Excuse me, the second item I have before the board is a general procurement update. I'd like to start at the top with the detention center plumbing fixtures. Levi has received those three quotes, and he's in the process of evaluating what he's received, but they should be able to make a decision in the next little bit and get those ordered and ready for the contractor once that's awarded. The next one on the noxious weed chemicals, that has been through legal for review. They found no concerns in the project, or the department will move forward with purchasing for the fiscal year '24 off of the state con, picketing off a state contract with Wilbur Ellis. The grandstands replacement, that has also been, the scope of work has been refined and been through legal for review, and I will head out tomorrow to gather up requests for quotes on that project. Moving down the list to the forensic pathologist building show, we did receive questions on Monday, and we are in the process of responding to those questions, and that addenda will be issued on Friday. And the final one, the detention center roof will eventually fall off, as indeed Christie responded that we have received those warranties, and that project is closing out.
Phew, one off the list.
Yeah, that put a smile on my face.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott.
Scott Crowther, Event Director, Business Manager, the Event Center Wellness Complex. Today, you guys have a contract for consulting booking and promotion services, or promotion services for our upcoming concert seasons. I know we've discussed this, the terms of the contract, this is just the contract reflecting those terms before you. We reviewed it with Alan and made any recommended, recommended changes that he had, and sent them back to Niederlander for the, their final changes, and they, this is, this now represents their changes, or our changes, our recommended changes as well.
Okay? You have any questions?
I do. Where, I, where do we have this contract? I've not seen it on my computer anywhere.
I sent it to Brayden to, to give to you guys to put in your packet, though. I have a copy of it right here. If you guys don't have, do you not have the copy right there?
I have a copy here.
I don't have a copy of it.
Scott, I haven't seen it by the way.
Yep, it's not on the website.
So, I'm not ready to approve this until I have a chance to look at it.
They, and they wouldn't put it on the website.
Yeah, sure.
Correct, but...
Include the general public.
Did they just address the changes you and I talked about?
So, we didn't change the, the stuff that you and I talked about as far as the dates, that stuff that we have to just, to discuss with those guys. It's just a discussion point, not necessarily the contract change.
Okay. Well, it looks like we'll have to put it on Tuesday. Sorry.
All right.
That's a wrap.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, looks like, Christie.
Christie Plaza, Controllor. I'm not sure where the board wants to go with this discussion. I just figured we needed to keep updates as far as ARPA projects go. We did do some price adjustments on the current ARPA projects. Really hasn't affected bottom line too much. This meeting was more gonna be to try and talk about backup plans for those items that may drop off. I provided the, the group with a copy of the backup list. I unfortunately didn't reach out to departments until yesterday to have that backup list updated. I received some feedback, and Campbell got back with me, so his numbers are reflected in here. Tony got back with me this morning, so on the sheriff projects, the polish, the cement, he said that was only to be about $200,000, not $222,000. The CPUB showers, if they complete D and E pod, it would be an additional $285,000, so that dollar amount's good. The landscaping, that dollar amount's good. Emergency generator's good. Air handlers are $140,000, that number's good. The walk-in freezer went from $16,000 to $18,000. Search and rescue building would be $400,000, not $383,000. Emergency panels, $16,000. Parking lot, $100,000. Dental light was not on the list. That's $3,500. Body scanner for $145,000. So, that's his list. And I can update the list that I gave the board for these items if you would like me to. Kyle reached out and had some comments about if we were to buy out existing leases. He provided me with the, the cost of his department, and this wouldn't be equipment, it wouldn't only be vehicles. His cost is $52,000. If we bought out the leases countywide, that would be about $310,000. That's not on your, your list. Vehicle replacements, that's what Kyle provided with you, that extra sheet of paper, that would be about $1,003,000, and then if we did the first year of vehicle replacement, that would be $1,003,000. So, I don't know what you would like me to include on this list, or you, if you even want me to keep this list going.
This is the backup list you're talking about?
Yeah. I, I need some direction from the board if you want me to do this, if you want to wait, remeet in a month when we know what's going on with forensic pathology.
I, I'd like to meet in a couple of weeks. The Sixth Street out here, we should have stuff by tomorrow, and so that's a pretty big one, too, to, so I'd like to meet in two weeks and, and see if we have what direction and what's going on there. I'd like a little more extensive discussion on, you was gonna start something, was looking at the upstairs here, and you talked about a module or something, a, a solution there.
Yeah.
So, those are two million-dollar projects that I think that in two weeks we could meet again and have a discussion, see where we're at there.
Okay, I did talk to Brayden about the cameras. The only department that's really gotten back with him is the Event Center, so there could be discussion of... What? Okay, so maybe if any department that has sent information could also include me in that email, then I would have that as well when I update the board. So, I guess that's another area where we need to have additional discussion because if we've got other departments that would like to use that money, we have $400,000 earmarked for cameras.
Yeah, I, I think a minimum of two weeks we need to, to meet and see where these couple of projects are.
Okay.
The million-dollar ones that...
So, in two weeks, we'll discuss Sixth Street and the east entrance, remodel above elections, and the cameras.
I think remodel above the elections is off, right?
It is, but, but we've talked about a building, and John was gonna look into some things.
Sorry, I should say... Sorry, I should say relocating ISP kids.
Yeah.
Okay, do you want me...
I think that's a good option, yeah.
Do you want me to update that backup list for the items that I've got? Or just scrap that list?
Well, no, I, you don't need to update it. I think, I mean, if you have some things that people have just added...
Well, the, the items I said to you that Tony had, and also the vehicles. I know we have a list of what those specific vehicles are.
Yeah.
I think we need to keep the list current, and so I would go ahead if there's additional stuff added on there, so we can at least just see what, what the different projects, potential projects are.
Okay, are there any items on this list you want me to take off?
I don't think we need to take any off because we'll make that decision when we...
As you go.
To that point, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we need all three of us here to talk about taking off stuff.
Okay.
But, thank you. It is appreciated. All right.